Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 10 Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thank you for being here this evening and for joining us online. We'll go ahead and get started with the meeting, and I'll ask the clerk to read our roll, please.
Councilmembers Breckie, Erickson, Kylie, Nitzer, Selberg, Sale, Starr, Staley.
All right. We are honored to have Pastor Brian Reynoldsen here from Celebrate Community Church to give our invocation this evening. So I would ask that you rise for Brian to give that, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance to follow immediately after.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Let's all pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for a gift such as tonight, where everyone can come together, Father, for the common good. And I pray for those who are giving of their lives and serving. I pray, Father, tonight, that they will listen well, that they will share with great wisdom. And, Father, I pray for those in attendance who are wishing to be heard. I pray, Father, that you will give them kindness as they share. Father, I pray for those who also have given great service to this city, or are here tonight to be appreciated for a good work. Father, I thank you for Mayor Paul as well, for his heart to serve. Help him lead wisely. Father, I ask for your Holy Spirit to guide this meeting, to rain peace over it. In the precious name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, we get to kick off our meeting with some awards tonight. This is kind of a fun time of year where every year we honor our city employees for three different awards within the city. Our V.L. Cruisenberry Award, our Gene Fulham Camp Management Excellence Award, and our Employee Excellence and Safety Award. And I'll read what those are in a second here, but we do this once a year in December. And the employees that are recognized for these awards not only get recognized amongst their peers, get recognized at this meeting, they get to come to the city council, bring their family members. They also get a check for $500 from the city with the requirement that you have to come to the city council meeting to get your check. So that's why they're all here. But the first award we give out annually is called the V.L. Cruisenberry Award. And it's established in honor and memory of former Mayor V.L. Cruisenberry, and it recognizes and honors annually an employee who demonstrates excellent performance, judgment, productivity, loyalty, professional pride, and other noteworthy accomplishments in relation to city employment. And I'm going to read the entirety of the nominees, just so you know who was nominated for this. We had Doug Byers and Joe Montes, and they were nominated together, and they're our sewer collection techs in Public Works. We had Matt Cerny in our Housing Division. We had Trev Dolly, who's a mechanic with our Fleet Team. We had Tanya Fogarty, an accountant in Finance. We had Officer Brady Lewin, a community resource officer with the PD. Jody Linawebber, patient support tech in our Health Department. Bo Mortensen, a fire captain on Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. Ben Schaaf, who is an equipment operator with Street Team. Valerie Shownwell, a human relations specialist in our Attorney Office. Alice Singh with our Library. And the winner of this year's Cruisenberry Award is Seth Peterson in our Housing Division. So Seth and your family, why don't you come on up here? And Seth was specifically nominated for a program that he implemented called Project Tom, which stands for, again, Transition Out of Mobile Home. We had a program where we'd provide housing assistance to people who needed mobile home repair. But sometimes the dollars that we were spending on the mobile home repair was not the best solution. And we realized that a better solution of those dollars, I shouldn't say "we," Seth did, was to maybe help them transition out of that unsafe housing environment to provide first month's deposit, rent, moving costs, things like that, to get them into a more stable housing environment. So it was using existing city dollars, existing city resources, with a better outcome for the people he is serving. So it looks like you got your family here. You want to introduce them real quick?
Yes. This is my daughter Vivian. This is my wife Stacy, and this is my son Colton.
Colton, looks like he's running for office. Colton, he's running for office right there. All right. Well, with that, I'm going to make sure I get you the right check here, sir. There you go. And this nice award. So there you go, man. Thank you. The second award we give out is called the Fulham Camp Award. And the Fulham Camp Award, let me get my right sheet here, is established in memory of former Human Resources and Employment Manager Gene Fulham Camp. And it recognizes and honors annually a high performer and leader in the mid-management employee group of our city, whose performance drives change, builds commitment, maximizes talent, and focuses on excellence and customer service. And the folks that were nominated, this is a great class of people, too, just got some real good rock stars in the city employees. But the first nominee was Julie Charbonneau. Julie's EMS Quality Assurance Coordinator in Health, has a lot to do with our EMS system, our ambulance system. Rana DeBoer, our Work Well Manager in Human Resources. Jennifer Disburg is a Record Supervisor in Police. Luanne Ford is our Public Health Manager in Health. Deborah Gajkowski, Project Manager in Public Works. Deborah is currently managing the water reclamation project, so she's got a big lift in front of her there. Grace Holson is our Communication and Marketing Supervisor in the Comms Team. Al Rutger is a Housing Compliance Coordinator in the Housing Team. Brian Sargent is a Park Supervisor with Parks and Rec. And Jane Taylor is a Branch Librarian at the Rounding Library. So those were some of the nominees, but ultimately the winner of this award went to a guy who saved my bacon quite a few times this year already, and that is Mr. Regan Smith. And so I'd like to ask Regan and your family to come up here. You want the check or the trophy? Take the check, my man. There you go. So, yeah, Regan is a staple in the city, and you see him on TV a lot, but you only see him when there's bad news a lot of times. And with the tornadoes and the flooding and all the disaster response work we had this year, Regan really shone, and it made me realize how invaluable he is to the city, how important his role is in the city. And so it was a real honor to present him with this award. So congratulations, Regan. And we got to introduce this wild man.
Henry Smith.
Henry? All right, buddy. And your other family didn't want to come up here? Just guys tonight? All right. Thank you, guys. All right. And then the last award we give out annually is called our Employee Excellence and Safety Award. It recognizes a city employee who has made a significant and measurable contribution toward achieving the city's safety objectives. On our core values, we use the acronym sticker. That first core value is safety. Teamwork, innovation, character, and respect are the others, but safety's first, and it's first for a reason. And the nominees for that were Mick Ackerman, who's a fire protective equipment tech in fire. James Borchardt, a librarian at one of our branch libraries. Kaitlin Eubanks with IT. Jean Pearson, Recreation Coordinator for Parks and Rec. Rick Pudwell is our Public Health Lab Manager for Health. Luke Schmidt is a firefighter, and Matt Sorrell is an equipment operator in the Street Department. But the award for this ended up going to Dan Amon and Chad Hochstein, who are sewer techs with the Public Works Division. So I'm going to invite those guys to come up here. And they don't need to give 500 bucks. They got to split this. So, sorry, guys. But, yeah, there you go. But these guys, what they did, which was really admirable for the city, is recognize that we had some unsafe procedures with one of our main lift stations over by the Great Plains Zoo. I think we call it the Zoo Lift Station. And that's some work that had to be done there. We had some SOPs that not only were outdated, but some that didn't even exist. So they took the initiative to write some SOPs or standard operating procedures to make sure that we followed the right safety protocols going forward, because quite honestly, it was a very, it's kind of a dangerous situation where they were working, realized, listen, we got to do a better job with the safety of the situation. So they took it upon themselves to do that, and hopefully will make things safer in years to come for others who have to come behind you and do that same work. So that's honored and appreciated. Thank you, guys, for being here and for your work at the city. We'll grab a photo, and I'll give you these trophies as well. You see them leaving now. I was telling them we were going to change this to the end of the meeting yesterday, and I kind of got the stink eye on that. So we left it at the front. We'll move on then, counsel, to item number five, which is approval of our consent agenda.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
All right. Motion approved by Counsel Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion, counsel? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Breckie, Erickson, Kylie, Nitzer, Selberg, Starr, Staley.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 13, which is our regular agenda.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion approved by Counsel Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right. We'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Breckie, yes. Erickson, Kylie, Nitzer, Selberg, Starr, Staley, yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We're at the general public input portion of our agenda tonight. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item that we are considering at that time only. So at this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public forward for general public input. Clerk, please note, our time right now is 7:13.
Good evening.
Good evening. Neil Anderson, 1709 North Paddington Trail in Sioux Falls. First time addressing the city council here, and I just want to thank all of you for your service to the community. I've come to appreciate and respect how much time and commitment you put into this role that you have, and it's important to the city, and thank you for that. Also an opportunity to say thank you for how you handled the tornado situation in the city. I thought it was just a tremendous job. Made me proud to be a member of the city. I'm here to talk to you tonight about zoning ordinance that we, first hearing will be next week, and we don't have a lot of time with the three-minute testimony to kind of give you our perspective. So I'm here to introduce it to you and invite all of you out to our neighborhood to get a better sense of what our concerns are with the safety of the proposed roads. But just a brief introduction tonight. You can see on the diagram up there, I have a satellite view of Canterbury Heights development in northeast Sioux Falls. It's bound by Great Bear up there on the north and Cactus Heights on the west, so it's already a difficult development to get to. And in the yellow box there, you'll see where there's a proposed Golden Gateway development that is part of that zoning ordinance change, up for hearing next week. The original plan with our development at Canterbury Heights was to have a major north-south corridor road that would allow traffic in and out from Madison Street. And it was well-designed and planned. It was part of the engineering development plan for our Canterbury development. And we had no concerns with safety. And you can see on the diagram here, that yellow line in the middle represents where Highline Avenue was intended to go from Madison. And once again, it depicts a good traffic pattern going north and back south, where traffic could peel off to the left, towards the current development, or towards the east and the right to any future development. What you see now is the preliminary development plan superimposed on that future area of development. And if you'll take note, there are no north-south access roads from that major residential area. Furthermore, the Highline Avenue that was originally planned was eliminated from the plan, creating a traffic concern for our existing development. It's unsure how Highline was eliminated. We do know that the Stone Arch Development for Canterbury, the Golden Gateway Development, and there was some participation in Sioux Falls. But it's our belief in interpreting the ordinance is that because the Highline Avenue was an external feature that affected corridor traffic, there should have been a council approval to eliminate that road from the plan. So as a result, what we have is a proposed development with traffic safety concerns. And my purpose of being here tonight is just to introduce it to you and say, please come out. We'll meet with you anytime to give you some more background and detail, so we can express our concerns in greater detail.
Thanks, Neil. Well, you can talk more on it next week when it's on the agenda. Good evening. Come on, step up to the mic, sir.
Travis Morrison. I just want to say that there's poor people in Sioux Falls, and you can help us out and, you know, get the budget right and legalize marijuana. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Travis.
Good evening. Scott Fitch, 1713 North Paddington Trail. I'm with the Canterbury Group as well. And so there's two points that I would like to make, and we'll talk about it next week as well. There's a spot there where there's going to be an apartment complex, three- to four-story apartment complex relatively close to this neighborhood. And it seems like it's more in the middle of a neighborhood instead of being on the outer edges or closer to the roadways. So that's one issue. And then there's an issue where this Rosemary Street, it's just like Neil was talking, they kind of vacated or whatever happened with Highline, and now there's the problem with this Rosemary where they have to cut, like, do like four different turns to get out of the development to a stoplight instead of, like, what we say, the way we're wondering is just having a road go right through. So that's my concern. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Anyone else this evening for public input? Good evening.
Hi, Stephen Ciano again. I do welcome the positive efforts and actions of the city people when they do so. And a couple of names were mentioned tonight. James and Alice of the library system. I just spoke with Alice earlier on the phone. She was looking up Marbury v. Madison for me and Jefferson's relation in that such things of history interest me. And sometimes I call upon such city workers to enlighten me. And she was helpful. And James, I have dealt with in the past on a regular basis, as I used to live in the area and go to his library branch, which he runs. Now, I have had some serious issues, being disabled and being discriminated against for my disability and my belief system. I've tried to make it clear, like in the last time I came here, that a lot of what has happened has been ultimately based upon my beliefs, which are legitimate beliefs, although they are not an actual religion. So a lot of people don't seem to realize that some of us, and we are entitled to our beliefs, do have beliefs which are not of any particular religion. And the First Amendment does make it clear that we do have that right. I can explain it to you, as I have in the past, that freedom of religion does imply freedom from religion, and freedom of individual belief would be involved in that as well. And my not participating in certain rituals is not done as a matter of protest, but as a matter of my belief system. And I hope to, in the future, be respected for that. I've brought such matters to the Human Relations Department, and they should have referred it, I thought, because of the attack on me for my beliefs and my disability, they should have referred it to State Attorney, the U.S. Attorney, and instead told me I was on my own and told me where I could go to. And instead, well, I don't feel that that is doing their job, because I understand the first job of the city attorney is to advise the mayor and the city council and other city employees. And secondly, is to serve the public and perhaps take upon them their own selves to defend the public from such actions as I have been subjected to. And there was no such referral. So I leave that on you, and we need oversight. Maybe you can set up something. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Anyone else this evening for public input? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Drew Christensen. I just wanted to echo both Neil and Scott's points here on the Canterbury Heights project, as well as thank all of you for your time tonight and that you, those of you that have responded to our emails, and just again extend our invitation to come out, because obviously this is not enough time to get anything really talked about and see kind of what we're talking about and look at what we're seeing. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Drew. Anyone else for public input? All right. Clerk, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 15, the second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the issuance of its wastewater system revenue bond in one or more series to the South Dakota Conservancy District, authorizing the use of the proceeds thereof for capital improvements, pledging the wastewater system revenue of the city to the payment of said wastewater system revenue bond, fixing the terms of such wastewater system revenue bond, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement between the city and the South Dakota Conservancy District, and authorizing the execution and delivery of such wastewater system revenue bond to the South Dakota Conservancy District not to exceed $41,625,000.
All right. Thanks, Denise. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the presentation we provided last week. I'll just hit the highlights again. That's the conceptual view of the expanded wastewater plant as closer to you. Again, project location, many people don't know where the wastewater plant is, in the extreme northeast part of the city. We've got a more regional view here to share with you. Just great vision from our forefathers to buy almost 400 acres in that part of the city, not only to serve us for the last 40 years, but for at least the next probably 100 years going forward. Some of the areas that are circled in blue are the areas that we're going to focus on with the rehabilitation. And the expansion project, substantial rework has to be done. The areas that are not highlighted, they've already been renovated in recent years. And just with the corrosive nature of wastewater, be substantial upgrades from roofing systems to electrical systems, in addition to expanding those systems, so we can go from 21 million gallons a day capacity up to 30.1 million gallons per day. This is the first of four loans that we'll request from the state of South Dakota with their low-interest funding program through the state revolving fund. This is for that first loan, number one. We have very favorable rates at 2.5% interest at 20 years. We do have our bond council here tonight. Doug Hayek, if you have any specific questions on the bond? Here is just the conceptual schedule. We've already kicked off the design. We're aiming to have conceptual design complete and the first preliminary cost estimation by March of 2020. We're going to be giving you the first quarterly update, I think, on January 7. Had an informational meeting, but we'll also be bringing before you the construction manager at risk contract in January, February timeframe. We'll have a pretty substantial year in 2020 with a lot of design work, and we'll start the construction in early 2021, with the goal of completing the construction by 2024. And then I do have one additional slide to respond to Counsel Staley's question last week. All right. The question last week was, what are the rates that have been put in place? And so about a year ago this month, we brought a rate case forward for your consideration, and we set rates for 2020 through 2023, very modest rate increases to support this project, not only at the plant, but in the collection system. And so in 2020, residential rates will go up by 6%, and they cascade 5%, 4%, 3%. And then beyond 2023, those are simple projections, and we'll true that up as we get closer to that date. And again, Doug and I are here if you have any questions.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Mark or for Doug on this? Counsel Staley.
There we go. Thank you for bringing this chart in. And I, just for the, I was, as you know, I was the one who had the most questions on this when it was, was that a year ago we had this brought to us? And at the time, I had an ordinance, I believe, allowing the second penny to be somewhat connected to this as a collateral in case we didn't progress as we needed. And just for the sake of the public, because this is the largest loan we've ever had in our history, $260 million to be paid back out of the enterprise fund, out of the sewer portion of your bill. So the citizens are going to be using that from their waste treatment part of their bill. So what I want to ask is if we would run into a problem where we don't have the population to support this payment in an affordable way, we, just to say publicly, we could open that second penny up to be part of the payment package, correct? Because I think we had that discussion even a year ago, that we didn't have to, I wanted to have that somewhat formalized in writing, but I was, I remember people saying that that could, down the road, we could add that as a payment source.
I think that's a question for city council, and that for me, that's a policy discussion.
But, so there is a possibility. I mean, as far as when we have a bond, maybe Doug Hayek could help us with this.
It's not required through the SRF program. We've got sufficient rate coverage for it. And we also, up until this point, we were very normal to taking 10-year term notes from the state, just based on the size and scale. And again, we're not borrowing 260 million. The plant project is 160. And then there's a number of cash-driven, cash-funded projects that are in that case for the capital investment. So it won't be bonding up to 260 million. I know you've mentioned that number before, and I just want to clarify that. But as far as we qualify for the SRF program, we've got sufficient rate coverage to just pledge wastewater rate revenues. And then we've stretched the term out instead of a 10-year term to a 20. And so second penny revenues will not be required.
But if they were, we could use the second penny to pay that bond down, right?
That'd be a question either for council or for Doug.
Doug, could you answer that? I mean, just because I did call up here, and I know that I talked with the guy who was in charge of this whole revolving loan program, and he said some municipalities actually use a second penny as their payment source.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Doug Hayek. I'm with Davenport Evans. The sales taxes are typically not used for utility improvements. The sales taxes are typically not used for utility improvements. The loan that this is, that is being made here is secured by a pledge of system revenues. And the loan covenants in the agreement require that the city maintain rates that are, that produce 110% debt service coverage. So that's what the loan documents would require. If it came to a point where you didn't feel like you wanted to keep those rates anymore, you'd have to go back to the state to see if they would be willing to modify the loan agreement to allow a reduction in rates and substituting a pledge of sales tax revenues. That would be highly unusual. In fact, I've done these for 30 years, and I've never, never done that. There have been times when the state has had what they refer to as double-barreled security pledges, which include system revenues and sales tax pledges. It's been years, many years, since I've done one of those. They really don't like those anymore, and frankly, if anybody tried to do it now, I don't think they would accept it. But technically, it's perhaps a possibility, but it would be highly unusual.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel Nitzer?
Well, first of all, something that I've been reflecting on is that there are some that have advocated that we use a second penny to subsidize this particular enterprise to soften rates. And if you look at the amount of money that this enterprise works through, it would take a significant amount, probably millions of dollars of the second penny, to make a difference in rates. So it would seem rather strange and inconsistent that one would be proposing that on the one hand, but then on the other hand, claiming that there will be an apocalypse and doom and gloom if the second penny ever had to backstop the parking enterprise fund. So I can't square those. But my question is, the loan, you said loan and bond, is this a loan or is it a bond? I mean, that may be semantics, but, I mean, is the state bonding and loaning us money? Where's the money coming from?
There's a little bit of both in that. Technically, what you are doing is issuing a bond. It's a, it's a bond that's secured by system revenues. The proceeds of that are actually used to repay, what the state, the SRF program is a loan program, but essentially under state law, when a city issues debt like this, whether you call it a loan or a bond, under the statute, it's technically a bond, but it's effectively a loan as well. It's the same thing, really. But the two terms with this program do get interchanged.
And you've been talking about, and I remember talking to the director about this at one point, you've been talking about the state, and they don't just loan this money out without, they look and they want to see that your rate model that they believe with their analysis is sufficient to cover to pay this back, because they don't, obviously, they don't want somebody to default. So they're doing, so can you tell us about what they're looking at before they're willing to go forward with the transaction like this?
Right. The South Dakota Conservancy District is operated through the Board of Water and Natural Resources, and DENR actually does the technical administration of the program. But the South Dakota Conservancy District is, was created by the state for the purpose of issuing bonds. It issues bonds, and then it uses the proceeds of those bonds to make loans to typically municipalities or sanitary districts, water districts, and things like that. But most of the time, it's cities and, you know, towns throughout the state of South Dakota. Under the bond covenants of the bonds that the South Dakota Conservancy District issues, there are requirements for debt coverage. The state is basically saying that we will not make loans unless those loans satisfy these requirements. One of those requirements is 110% debt service coverage. So if you have system revenues, you got to make sure that your system, if you're pledging system revenues, I mean, as the security for the loan, you have to make sure that you've set the rates at a level that will always produce 110% debt coverage.
Okay. And, thank you. Finally, I would say that I, the director was not evading when he said it was a policy question. It is a policy question. The adopted policy of the city council by resolution is that enterprises will be self-supporting. And so it doesn't matter whether it's this loan, or if it's, whatever it is, at any time, if an enterprise needs more money, then it's up to the city council to decide, are we going to approve a rate increase? And if we're not going to do that, we're going to have to backstop it somewhere else. And that would mean that we'd have to change our policy and decide that we're going to infill it with something else. My last question, and this is for Director Cotter, thank you very much, is the target operating revenue goes up over the year, or the target operating reserve goes up over the years? And I'm guessing that's because fixed costs are going to continue to inflate over the years, such as salaries and materials and chemicals?
Yeah, so we generally have a 90-day operating target, specific to operating, because just when we release and issue POs, we've got to, based on the timing of issuing them, you've got to have cash in the bank to make sure you can have those. And so those are longstanding targets that we've had in place.
And that leads to my final point, just so people realize, every enterprise has fixed costs, like wages, chemicals, that go up over the years. There's inflation, and if we don't, I don't, nobody likes raising rates, but if you don't incrementally keep up with that, it's going to chew up, inflation will chew it up, so we can't stay static. So making these responsible small adjustments over the years saves not having to do double-digit increases later, because somebody else kicked the can down the road.
That's exactly right.
Any other questions? Anyone else?
I'll move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Nitzer.
All right. Motion approved by Counsel Erickson, seconded by Counsel Nitzer. Discussion on this, Counsel Staley?
Well, just in response to the second penny issue, we did use the second penny for collateral with the parking ramp. That's an enterprise fund, and the second penny was put as a part of that package, which I did not vote for. And I think if we asked our citizens, if we ran into dire straits, would you rather use the second penny to help take up the slack with your sewer bill, or have it pay for the parking ramp? I think the answer to that would be very clear from the citizens I visit with. That being said, this whole project has been built on the belief that we're going to grow by 100,000 citizens in the next 20 years. So they're going to help pay for the cost of the facility. If by some chance we don't grow that much, we still have to pay it back. So that's why I was just bringing up the fact that we could tell our citizens that we could use that second penny to ensure that we will not be putting a heavy burden of the fee of their water and the sewer portion of their bill, because that's a necessity they need. They can't make a choice about that. They have to flush their toilet and put the water down the drain. So that's the second penny story.
Any other discussion, council? All right, let's call for a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 16.
The second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Chapter 111, alcoholic beverages, to reduce the full-service restaurant on-sale license fee, and phasing out the off-sale packaged liquor city waiting list and on-sale dealer licenses and alcoholic beverages city waiting list.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Erickson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I will be much briefer tonight. I know we've done an informational meeting and did a full presentation with even more details than the informational. And so I just want to go through the intent of the proposed ordinance changes, and then in the lack, as we go through this, really, it's just to reduce the full-service restaurant on-sale license from $260,000 that was required to be that amount for 10 years to $155,000. Now, as you will see on your screen, and as I discussed last week, and I have spoke to all of you, that I will be offering an amendment to match that liquor license, the current liquor license rate of 192, 360. The reason for doing that and the reason for that amendment, I will talk about when the amendment is made, but it's really just in the name of compromise for dealing, talking with several of the people that have offered feedback and how we can work together, and really not to make it confusing as, when the census changes, it's going to go up to that rate anyways. And so to have it at 155, move it up, move it down, move it around, it just is too much, and also protect the asset of the four that have already purchased their license to not have it drop such a substantial amount. So the second component of this is to repeal the off-sale packaged liquor license and on-sale dealer license waiting list with a grandfather clause. This simply presses the pause button as of November 1st. There's currently 19 people on that waitlist. The intent is to honor those folks that have put their name on the liquor license waitlist. But this does give the administration time to research, come up with those requirements that we see fit, and putting that in ordinance as far as, what does it mean for you to get your name on that waitlist? And how do other communities do it, and how has it been successful? The next time a liquor license will be available is in 2021, so we have substantial amount of time. With those 19 people still on the list, we foresee that the actual next time we could get past that 19 could even be four-plus years or longer. So I know there's a few folks here to speak tonight. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have, and I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this topic tonight? Please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Matt Krogman, representing the South Dakota Licensed Beverage Dealers and Gaming Association. Typically, when we get involved in issues, a lot of times, they're statewide issues dealing with licensing and regulations of alcohol sales or video lottery, but we also do keep an eye on municipal and county ordinances for things that might affect our industry, and that's why we're here tonight. When Counsel Erickson reached out to us to tell us about the proposal to reduce the restaurant on-sale license to 155,000, we had some concerns. We, first of all, we understand the importance of economic development and providing as many tools as possible for economic development in a community, and how important that is. And our members aren't afraid of competition. However, we feel that that competition needs to be fair, that competition needs to be equal, and we felt like for those that invested 260,000 into their business, to allow competition to come in for that substantial amount less wasn't fair and equal. With the proposed amendment, we feel much better about that. It still isn't perfect, but we feel that that's much closer when it comes to current businesses competing with new businesses that might come in. The other point on why we like the amendment is it is for more consistency. As these people are, our future business owners are planning their businesses, they need to know what their investment in a liquor license is going to be, and if it's jumping around a lot, it's very difficult to make those plans. So for those reasons, we'd ask that you support the amendment and then go on to support the ordinance. One last thing, I'd just like to thank Counsel Erickson for reaching out to us and involving us in the discussion early on. That doesn't always happen in this process, so we really appreciate her reaching out and allowing us to be involved in the discussion. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, man. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right. Let's get a motion on the floor, and then we can move into our discussion here.
Move to approve.
Second, Selberg. All right. Motion approved by Erickson, and seconded by Counsel Selberg.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'll make a motion to amend Section 1 by changing the full-service restaurant on-sale license fee to 192, 360.
Second. All right, there's a motion by Erickson on that, to that effect, and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on that fee change amendment?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'm happy to answer any questions and have the dialogue, but I think I covered it in the initial presentation.
Okay. All right, seeing no other discussion, let's vote on that amendment, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, the amendment passes seven to zero, so we're on, at the amended main motion, and we'll look for discussion on that amongst council. I'll start with Counsel Breckie, and then Counsel Selberg.
Last week, I raised the issue of, you know, what's going to happen after this ordinance is passed, and how are we going to make future decisions regarding the distribution of licenses? And I'm glad that I raised the issue, because I think it did engage in a discussion. I think it's important that the public knows that we're getting rid of this list. It's like a moratorium or an attrition, it's going to go away, but there will be another list. And it's important that we're committed to getting those new criteria in place, because I think it's going to take some time. I think it's going to, you know, it's going to be a little more difficult maybe than anticipated, but in any event, I didn't raise the issue with the idea of being critical, but I'm more than happy to move forward on this, and, you know, I would extend an offer to be part of the solution and part of the discussion as to how that looks in the future, and I will be supporting it, and I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Counsel. Counsel Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to throw out kudos to Counsel Erickson for her efforts on this bill, her ordinance. She really has reached out to about every delegation possible in the state throughout everything. She's certainly done her due diligence and covered her bases and talked with people and built a pretty good network with this, so it was a, she did a nice job of putting it together. I also wanted to thank Jamie Palmer, Jamie and the city attorney and his team for their work and assistance in putting all this together, too. So it's been one of these where I think it's been a pretty collaborative effort. I think we've had plenty of meetings, you've done a nice job talking with everybody I think we could probably think of, so anyway, I think we're ready to go. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion, council? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 17, please.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised joint zoning ordinance for Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls by rezoning property legally described as the north one-half of the southwest quarter, except the north 375 feet of the west 290 feet thereof, and except tracks 1A and 2 of Canigs Edition thereof, and bridges of Spring Creek Track 1 of Section 22, Township 100 North, range 49 west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District.
Good evening, Mayor, city council.
That's a long one. All right, Adam, welcome.
Adam Roach, Planning and Development Services. The applicant here is Kathy Kruger. The site is located at 27072 479th Avenue, just south of Schindler 1 mile via Highway 11, east 1 mile on County Highway 106, and north approximately .3 miles, or where you see that star up there. The applicant has requested to rezone a portion of the property from agricultural to rural residential. They're proposing to develop approximately 18 of the 57 acres that you see here outlined in white into eight individual lots for single-family residential. With that, I'd like to open it up for any questions that you may have. Here's a schematic of potential layout of that site.
All right. Thanks, Adam. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Stephen Ciano, I'm at a loss to understand how, if this is outside of the city limits, it pertains to this legislative body.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have questions for Adam on this? Counsel Nitzer?
First of all, that's a ton of contours. There must be a lot of topology there.
There is a lot of topography on this site. Yes, you're correct.
Staff position on this, and has there been any concern from the neighboring area?
Staff support this project. There has not been any neighborhood concerns.
Okay. Thanks.
Counsel Staley, and then Counsel Starr.
Would you explain to the constituent what the process is, please?
Absolutely. This is in the Lincoln County, city of Sioux Falls joint jurisdiction area, so that's why these come forward through us as well, after they go through Lincoln County.
Counsel Starr? Same issue? All right.
Move to approve.
Second, Breckie.
All right, a motion to approve this item by Kylie, seconded by Breckie. Any other discussion, council? Okay, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 18.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign bridge improvement grant, big application resolution for the preservation, rehabilitation of various bridges in Sioux Falls.
Hey, Kurt?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. Item 18 is a resolution, just as presented there, allowing Item 18 is a resolution, just as presented there, allowing the mayor to sign grant applications for bridge rehabilitation funding. Just a little background on our Sioux Falls structures, we have approximately 50 structures in the National Bridge Inspection Standards Program, and these are bridges in box culverts more than 20 feet long. We do inspections at an interval of two to four years, and the purpose of the program is to locate and evaluate existing bridge deficiencies so that we are safe. Just a little bit more background, in 2019, we have, we're awarded two big grants, and we are working on the design, and we'll be programming these two rehabilitation projects in the next year, so. City, like I said, is, we're seeking funds, and when we do these projects, the bridges are at a point where just some standard maintenance will help extend the life expectancy of those structures. We're asking for applications for four structures, and the four locations are shown on the map. Summit Avenue over the railroad was constructed in 2004, North Bonson over the Big Sioux River was constructed in 1989, East 57th over the railroad in 2008, and East 69th Street over the railroad in 2010. Again, just the, some of the maintenance, I won't read through that, but just some standard maintenance that goes along with, with anything, keeping those bridges in good repair so that they last a long time. This is the estimates, the, the grants are an 80/20 match, so those are the, the grant funds that's with the DOT, and then we would have a local match on the right column of the 20%. Those are just some pictures of the four structures. Council resolution, again, authorizes submission of the applications and engineering requests, support and approval.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Councillors, do you have questions for Kurt on this? Councillor Nightser?
On Marion Road, there was a bridge that was rehabilitated last summer at Dunham Park.
I'm not familiar.
Okay, so I was just going to ask whether that was part of this particular, or if we also do some rehabilitation?
We do some, it depends on the, just going back to this slide, it just kind of depends on the repairs that are needed and how they qualify. We work with a consultant to evaluate which structures we feel are, would be appropriate for applying.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions for Kurt? Look for a motion on this item? Move approval?
Second, Breckie.
All right, motion approved by Selberg, seconded by Breckie. Any discussion, council? We'll take a vote.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero, item 19.
A resolution approving the release of a portion of a permanent utility easement located in lot 44, block nine, Westwood Valley addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
Good evening again, Kurt Pupple with Engineering. The easement to be released is in Westwood Valley addition, near 26th and Ellis Road, just to the west of that intersection. Earhart Griffin Associates, on behalf of the owner, has requested the release. There are no facilities within the area to be released. Release of the easement will aid in the development of the parcel. City Engineer's Office recommends approval.
Thanks, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Councillors, any questions for Kurt, or can I get a motion on it? Move approval? Second, Kylie. All right, motion approved by Selberg, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion? We'll take a vote.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, item 20, please.
A resolution establishing reporting structures, pay scales, and evaluations for city council-appointed staff.
Councillor Nightser?
Each year, the city adopts a cost-of-living adjustment, known as the COLA, for all employees who ultimately report to the mayor. Similarly, the city council adopts the same COLA by resolution that matches the COLA given to other city employees that appointed council staff receive. This resolution will accomplish that. The adopted COLA for this year was 3%. The resolution we are approving tonight has no changes from last year, except for the pay scale adjustments to reflect that 3% COLA, and a change to reference the year 2020 instead of 2019. All other components, I, I want to point out, such as job titles, the, the steps, the advancement, the timing of those, and the reporting structures, all stay the same. All we're doing is adopting the COLA for our council staff to match what city administration employees receive for the, for the next year. And I ask for support, thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic? Councillors, do you have any questions for your colleague, or can we get a motion on it? Move approval? Nightser? Second, Kylie. Want to discuss it? Then I would ask for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?